Board. Bringing this to order, the zoning board of appeals for February second. Twenty twenty-three. Calling this meeting to order and. Roll call shows. Despite the. Gloomy evening, we're all here in attendance. Nobody called in sick. So it's good to see. Before we proceed a minute, someone there was spend some revisions and staff is going to read those into the. Records, so we have the. Edits. On record. I know this is just.
Yeah, so we've corrected the date on the minutes and then noted. Joe's presence and absence when he was not there for roll call and then when he joined the meeting. Sorry to phrase it that way.
Yeah, yeah. Appreciate that. Given those revisions to the minutes, do we have? Any approvals, any, any other further edits and do we have any recommendations or? Motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
One and two, all those in favor of the. Minutes is amended. All right, those are approved from January fifth.
Sorry, who seconded?
Where did you?
I think.
We need a buzzer. All right, let me proceed with the chairman's preamble here, kind of a displaying what we, what we can and cannot do. And the purpose here this evening, the zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements. After determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought here before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance. Or the sign ordinance and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density or height. Further, the board has here's cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same variances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County. Within thirty days after the decision here this evening is rendered. With that, I don't think there's any organizational procedural items. There is some unfinished business. And with that, I'll let Allegra bring us back up to speed on that.
Thank you.
It is regarding ZBA case twenty-two dash nineteen, Charles and Kate Davis. From Winter Hall Lane. Carryover from last month.
Yeah, so just to refresh everyone's memory, they're asking for two variances, one variance from chapter sixteen. Section seventy-eight to allow pool retaining walls and associated improvements to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer. And one variance from chapter twenty-seven, section two hundred and sixty-nine to allow a retaining wall to encroach into the side setback. And retaining wall height up to eight feet. I'll do more of a summary of the case since we went over it at the last meeting, but I have all the info available if anyone needs refreshing on specific aspects of it. So on January fifth, the zoning board of appeals deferred the case in order to give the applicant time to prepare a mitigation plan. There was public comment, there were two comments in support of the case. And on January twenty-fourth, the applicant submitted an updated site plan showing a proposed sixty-nine square foot rain garden. So these are the existing conditions again. The red line on the survey indicates the seventy-five foot stream buffer. The applicants are proposing to construct a seven hundred and forty square foot pool and a new pool deck and. Paper patio that will be entirely within the stream buffer and will extend an additional approximate fifteen feet beyond the existing home. The maximum encroachment into the buffer will be up to approximately forty-five feet. The applicants also propose to remove an existing drive-in steps. And construct two four-foot retaining walls, a dry creek. And a sixty-nine square foot rain garden that is sized to accommodate water runoff from the added impervious area. The rain garden is the updated change that the applicant came back to us with. The retaining walls and associated improvements will also be located entirely in the stream buffer and will encroach into the side setback. Should all variants for us be granted, the property would achieve the maximum allowed lot coverage of forty percent. So staff continues to find that the retaining wall setback encroachment and height does not go beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief. And is consistent with the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance. Our recommendation and thoughts on that haven't changed and the rain garden doesn't really have anything to do with that. Um. So we continue to find that the proposed retaining walls are incremental improvements that do not go beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief when it comes to the stream buffer variance. And will not increase the impervious area. We find that the seven hundred square foot pool would result in a large increase of impervious surface and would go beyond the minimum necessary to afford relief. And would constitute a grant of special privilege, none of the similarly situated houses across Winter Hall Lane have a swimming pool. And. The applicants have proposed a rain garden as a mitigation plan for the added impervious surface created by the proposed pool. That's been reviewed by planning and zoning as well as our city engineer. However, staff finds that the location of the proposed rain garden is too far removed from the proposed improvements to directly intercept. Impervious surfaces in order to properly treat them for water quality. Additionally, it appears that the new Dry Creek Riverbed would discharge directly into the rain garden. Making it possible that the velocity of water from the river rock would overwhelm the materials in the rain garden. Generally, staff does not recommend stormwater devices for residential properties and stream buffers due to their ongoing maintenance needs in order to remain effective. Based on these reasons. Staff recommends denial of the request for the swimming pool, pool decking, paper patio and rain garden to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer. And staff does recommend approval of the request for the retaining walls to encroach into the side setback. And to allow their height to be up to eight feet and of the request for the same retaining walls, the removal of steps and associated improvements and a dry creek bed improvement. To encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer. Subject to the following conditions shown on the screen here. Should the zoning board of appeals decide to also approve the request for a swimming pool, pool decking, paver patio, excuse me, and rain garden to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer. Staff has thought has conditions for that as well, and that's on another slide. If you all would like to see that. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Would the applicants care to approach the dais and restate your name, cases and what's changed since last? Last month?
Hi again, I'm Kate Davis, homeowner at eleven ninety-nine Winter Hall Lane. We've discussed that my family and I would like to put in a backyard pool and correct some ongoing drainage issues. Ultimately, all the improvements we are proposing will slow runoff water. And sediment from our property. The city has informed me their main concerns include the additional impervious. However, we are not exceeding maximum lot coverage. And the pool itself, while impervious surface serves as a rain water collector. We do, or we do not believe that we are going beyond what is necessary to build a backyard pool. Last month, it was brought up that the size of our pool was oversized. If you were to Google standard. Pool size of a backyard, what comes up is sixteen by thirty-two. These statements are also very relative to so many other factors. What we are proposing is not abnormally large, especially not for the size of our family or the size of our yard. From the last meeting, we. Proposed installing underground flow wells. The city then informed us that they did not feel like this was ideal, this is in between the meetings, we, we did propose flow wells first. They told us they were not ideal because they involved digging within the stream buffer. And they would require annual maintenance, we went back then and tried to think of a new plan because we felt maybe the flow wells weren't the way to go. The rain garden doesn't require as much digging and it doesn't require annual digging. So it also lets us incorporate native plants, so we felt like that was the best solution for this situation. We know that what we have in our backyard is not ideal circumstances. Obviously, we recognize that this isn't a standard by the book situation. What we are offering is a better solution than what we currently have. Everything we are offering reduces water encroaching the creek. We could move the rain garden to the pool side of the yard, but we felt it was best. To use it where water collects the most, which is coming down our driveway, our driveway slopes downhill, so it's coming down the driveway. And then it would go through the dry creek bed to the rain garden. The city engineer stated that the velocity of the water from the river rock would also likely overwhelm the materials in the rain garden. But the water right now currently is flowing just down our steps, it would be flowing down the dry creek bed, so. Adding the rain garden would then slow it more and help to keep the stream healthier. The city also stated that if approved, the rain garden must meet all criteria in the two thousand and sixteen edition of the Storm. Water or Georgia Storm Water Management Manual and be approved by the Community Development Director. This is not reasonable because again, the situation is not by the book. Our soil and yard area is not a hundred percent ideal in any regard or any manual. What we are offering though, without a doubt, will slow runoff water flowing to the creek. Also, I realized that breaking this up into two project makes sense for the city, but as homeowners, this is one project. We went to a very lengthy process of finding a reputable, eco-conscious pool designer. Who helped us design ways to slow water flowing to the creek within our stream buffer. So if we are to do this project, it would not just be a retaining wall project. To summarize, all improvements we are requesting will enhance the stream buffer slowing water to the stream. We are not requesting a special privilege as there are many homes in Dunwoody on a stream buffer that have backyard pools. Our backyard is unique and will most likely not meet all requirements from a storm water management manual. We are happy to use this information as a guide. But it cannot be used against us as we work to improve our yard. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of the? The project and the changes the applicants made? I don't imagine we have any opposition here as well. Okay. So if not, we'll. Close the public comment and open up for board discussion. Thoughts, board, questions for staff or applicant?
Because staff, could you change it to the screen with the layout with the? For the pool, thank you. And the rain garden is visible over on the bottom left. Of the property, a little bit above the gas line.
It's the, it's the oval shape, yep, just below their dry creek bed.
Yeah.
Where would that? Where would that go? To make it beneficial?
Where would it normally go?
Yeah, where should it?
I can, I can respond a bit like to the more sort of technical aspects of this. The, so the city engineers concerned with this specific location is, you know, you have a rain garden, it's amended soil and then it's vegetation in there. If there's a lot of sort of direct runoff. Surface runoff into a rain garden, the vegetation can be damaged. So a better location would be closer to the pool, so it can drain from those areas and then be sort of piped into. Into the pool through, just got us like drains in some way, shape or form. That that would be of the preferable location.
Can I ask why they didn't do it that way?
If you look at the bottom of the property. Um. The. This is where, so the stairs that are, it would be gone where the two four level, two level. Retaining walls would be, that currently is where the walk, the yard gets soggy, it's also currently where you can see visible runoff in the yard. So. I'm not the engineer, I know Brad, Brad together, but you know, the, the pool itself is all, it's going to be retaining water. Right, so if it's raining, the pool is actually going to be retaining water, not dumping water into the stream. And this would also mitigate the runoff on the left side of the property. So we could, you know, we would be willing to move it if that, if that's what y'all wanted us to do, but then we. We would still have a soggy yard there, which, you know, it's.
Well, I mean, would it be, would it be beneficial to have one in each area?
I can't speak to that, I don't know. You trying to ask us to spend more money?
Not making money on that. Um, I, I think. I'm sorry, don't.
Yeah, just remind you, state your name again and yeah.
My name is Brad Rankin, I'm the lead designer at Hearthstone Laundry Pools. Assisting with their pool design and so in response to the comment about would it be helpful to put a rain garden on both sides, well, of course. I mean, we could fill the whole yard up with rain gardens if we wanted to, I think the goal here is to. What can we do that is reasonable for construction to mitigate the amount of flow? It seems to me. I don't have an engineering degree and the engineers are recommending to place it in a, in a spot that maybe doesn't have the same velocity of water. And it seems very reasonable to put it over by the swimming pool. Our comment in addition, and why did we put it over there in the first place? Was because in our thinking. Any water that's leaving the property is net water added to the creek, so whether it was on one side or the other. Water was treating off the driveway or water it was treating up the pool, didn't make much of a difference, but. If it's a velocity question, it would be more beneficial to put it over closer to the pool. I think that's a good idea.
Oh, you can go. Um, so maybe the homeowner could come, um. Any of you guys, so I understand that you want a pool. I got that part and the arguments for the pool, but still the pool is in the. It's in an area that. You're not, we're not supposed to have it, I'm, I'm putting down the link.
Sure, I understand, and the creek itself is really runoff from the public shopping center.
So you gotta, you know, it's like, it's. So you gotta convince me now that. This is not a special privilege. And that. It's better. It's better now, it's gonna be better now than it was before, okay? And I'm not quite convinced yet, so go ahead.
So. If you look at the house, if we're looking at it, we see a giant red line. It's through the house. So theoretically, the house shouldn't even be there by the argument of the stream buffer, right? The stream buffers have changed over time because people have made different decisions about what. Does and does not constitute a stream, what does and does not constitute the amount of flow that should go into the stream. Or the dry creek bed, whatever we want to officially call it. Um. You know, ultimately. If you go into our backyard today. And you went to our backyard with your children, if you have children. It is, it's not really usable. It is a, in the, in the, in when it's a hundred and ten degrees in July. Somehow, some way, if it rained three days earlier, it is a mud pit. And so we are trying to mitigate that. While at the same time allowing us to have a pool in the backyard. And we don't find that to be completely unreasonable. You know, I think that from a. From a value of a Dunwoody property and ultimately, if you know, we've done a lot of changes to our house over the years and we want to stay here. This is another addition that's just going to continue to increase the property value in this area. And that's really what we all want to achieve is increase property values. You know, be able to stay here for a long time and this, and this helps keep us in Dunwoody and keeps us here for a long time. Our children are eleven and nine and we want them to entertain children, you know, people at our house and be able to invite people over without having to cross over. Roberts and Shambly Dunwoody, which is the swim tennis that is a part of our neighborhood. So I mean, I think that that's pretty reasonable not to have to ask my eleven-year-old to walk across two busy streets. And allow him to stay in our yard with his friends or my daughter the same way. I, I just, so I think that is the, that is the, the main reason that constitutes. The ability for us to put this here now. We could get into the weeds of is it really a stream? We could get into the weeds of that, but that, I think that goes to another level that I don't think any of us really want to go down that path because it's. There's no real answer, you know, we have, one person could tell you it is, one person's going to tell you it's not, I can tell you if it doesn't rain for three days, there's no water in there.
How many people in the neighborhood have pools?
Well, I think that's a fair question, in our neighborhood, I think there's one other pool. We only have eighty houses in our neighborhood. The branches backs up to our neighborhood, the branches is also on the steam buffer. We represented last time, I'm not sure if you were here, sir, we presented last time, there are around a dozen pools in the branches that have pools. As well as the swim tennis of the branches is in the, is in the stream buffer. There are houses that have been built in the last five, I mean, there are pools that have been built in the last few years that are within the exact same stream buffer.
The.
That were approved by, either by the city prior or by the council.
So revisit the argument again that. It's a mud pit now. So with the pool, it's gonna. Prevented by the velocity of the water going into the water, so that's gonna stop, it's gonna be like a collection pond?
That, yes, sir, and Brad can speak to that because if you look at other counties in the, in the vicinity of DeKalb County. They count that as a device that actually helps offset water draining into the, into the creeks. Now. The other side of it is really the other side of the yard where we put the rain garden is off the driveway, I think that was a unexpected consequence of the driveway. But you know that there, there's massive runoff down there, you know, and. I, you know, I, I think we could put a rain garden on the other side and whatever would help make you, make the city happy, but I think the flow well. Design was initially sent off because it's not appropriate for probably our red clay here in Georgia.
I, so I want to address a few things, I kind of want to unpack this a little bit, there's a lot to it. So we're talking about the rain garden, last time I know already you weren't here, but. Literally, the only change from last time and now is a sixty-nine. But. Rain garden and maybe we can be educated on rain gardens a little bit more, it might be helpful. But your pool, your, your pool representative has already said he's not, doesn't have an engineering degree, so. We're looking for. I know you, we want to give you a pool to the best of our ability.
Last time y'all, y'all, y'all motioned to give us the pool under the.
I didn't motion, I didn't motion anything.
One motion to approve it under, with concessions. And then the city manager stepped in and said, we are not allowed, you know, you can't do that. And so we came back with the concession that we requested from us.
So let me finish here, what I'm, what I'm saying is, so. You're adding additional impervious surface in the stream buffer itself, and I live in a stream buffer, by the way, and I have kids, so. I understand. The issues with drainage and all, mine are probably far worse than yours, I took two looks at your pictures. My yard is pretty much not even usable, so. When I look at the part of here about special privilege and you trying to make a case for. You know, hardship and needing to cross the street, it doesn't really carry a whole lot of water, no, no offense. So.
Neither does the, neither does the pool.
So, so my point is, is you got, you got a lot of things working against you in this case. And I am very much pro letting you do what you want with your property and things like that, but the truth of the matter is, your home is on a piece of land that is not really conducive to putting a pool there. And between drainage issues and you trying to fix them, at some point, it's just kind of like, is the juice worth the squeeze for your own benefit? On top of that, too, you've got a colonial pipeline, heaven forbid, should anything ever happen. You know, that, that could be an issue too, I'm not sitting here to play devil's advocate, I'm just. I'm just merely calling a spade, yeah, I'm merely calling a spade a spade here, and so when already asks you to make your case and you're just saying. Well, you know, it's, it's. The stream buffer is going through a house, I mean. That's, that's like half of Dunwoody, you know, so it's a grandfather type of situation, stream buffers are very unique. And I'm just not seeing a whole lot of difference from the last meeting until now, when we got a deferral here, other than I want a pool.
There was a lot of requests done in, in, between Kate, my wife and the city, lots of different options, we, you know, we. We sent designs with the flow, with the flow well, is that what it's called, the flow well? We sent, you know, and ultimately, I, I think the city felt the rain garden was a better idea. I don't think we came here with the, with the mindset of, I needed, you know, already wasn't here last time, with the mindset of, I needed to convince you guys, y'all, because I, we felt after the last meeting. That y'all wanted to give us the pool with the, with concessions of us mitigating more water, so I. I, you know, I apologize if I didn't come with a better argument, but I felt that that was what you asked for last time. So I, you know, but yeah, the stream buffer, it is, it is. What it is. I, I, I don't know what, I don't know, I mean, I can't, I'm not going to make up some, some story of, 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 you know, I'm just being blind and honest, if we're on this.
No, I get it.
Side here, I mean, we're all, we're all trying to help each other and be.
Right, but there, but we still have a. A code that we have to adhere to too, you know, and, and screen buffers are unique case particularly with respect to pools. And you know, you're right at the limit, it's impervious to services, one thing, but pools, a whole nother animal too, so I guess to follow up on that, I, I know. The gentleman that's helping you with your pool here, he said he's not an engineer, but if you could please help elaborate on what is meant by. A pool being a collect, being a collector in and of itself, because to me. I, I don't even know what that statement means.
Thank you, again, Brad with Hearthstone Luxury Pools. Okay. So yes, I am not an engineer, I do have a degree in architecture, if that helps, so I do spend quite a bit of time unpacking. These elements and researching the solutions that I offer my clients, so for what that's worth, okay? So not all counties do look at the swimming pool that way, but several do, one of the largest in our area Cobb County looks at the swimming pool. With the understanding that from a rain reclamation point of view, slowing water as it leaves the site. That a swimming pool is a very efficient basin of water that stops that from happening, you get an instant, you know. Now, when it's raining all day for three weeks. No amount of soil is going to retain any water whatsoever, and in that case, water is going to run straight into the stream, we all know that, the engineers know that. But the, the purpose of treating. Impervious surface is to prevent a heavy, quick rain from leaving the site too fast and overwhelming our streams, swimming pool does that extremely efficiently. So that's the reason behind the pool, okay, so I think. And I apologize, sir, we didn't meet last time either, to, to clarify some of the, the main arguments here is that. We want to not only just provide a swimming pool for the sake of wanting a pool, I mean, that's not a very good argument, I would agree. But we also want to improve the lot in its usability and improve the lot in the way that it handles water leaving the site and into that stream. Both the swimming pool by itself would improve the way that water is leaving the site compared to now. And any additional mitigation, whether it be by the book and ideal, also improves the way that water leaves the site. That's really the primary argument.
That's very helpful, thank you, thank you. Um. And just so you guys are aware too, part of the five is a five criterion. We look at, and it's not just made up criterion. Is, you know, the characteristics of the neighborhood too, right, I think you said there was one other pool and there's none, I think staff said there's none on this particular boundary. So that, that is, and then the one that I'm pretty. You know. You know, what is, what is the hardship is really my question here, I mean, it's, if it was a hardship and it wasn't, if it was a. If it was a more loose hardship and maybe weren't in stream buffer, I would have, take less issue with it, but the city clearly has pretty strong opinions on. You know, and, and I trust that they've looked at this carefully and. And have kind of done the research, so I just wanted to make note of that.
I have a question for the city. When. When they came with this plan, did you? Give them, tell them that. There would be, it would be better for them to move these rain collectors. To another area?
Yeah, so what we requested was a reduction in the, the pool area and the, the additional sort of area like a size reduction.
Okay.
That, that's sort of what, what, what we had requested. We do not, conceptually, we do not think that these kind of devices are particularly useful to. In stream buffers for sort of partially the reasons that the applicant stated like that. Maybe the yards tend to be soggy, they don't tend to drain particularly well. And then what you want for a device like this is to have good drainage, because you want the water to be filtered and you want it to still, it still has to drain into the ground. To prevent surface runoff, so in our experience, these things don't work particularly well. In, in conditions like that, so we did not ask them to move it, what we asked was instead to consider a reduction in the size of the additional. Improvements.
Okay, so for this type, for that setup, how, how much smaller? Like what are you, what, like from a seven hundred square foot pool to a, I know it was five hundred and twelve is the average.
We don't think about it like that, like what, what we're reviewing is just like a proposal. That's, you know, that we want something that works for the applicant, that we want something that works for them, so we're not sort of bargaining in, in that sense of we review what comes ahead of us and we give sort of. Conceptual direction and in a directional sense, but, but we don't have a number.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, sorry.
Oh, no, you go.
Paul, let me ask it this way, so they did leave here, right, with thinking that they needed to make some modifications and work with the city and come back, obviously that. There's a disconnect there as far as what they delivered versus what the expectations were. Are they able to meet those expectations, what would be the expectation? Are they able to meet those expectations? What would be the expectations if they were to? Is it a, a, a second rain garden near the pool? Is it a different device altogether? What would be that, that would probably get a conditional approval potentially? I don't want to ask you that on the spot, but potentially more favorable from the, from the staff.
And we had sort of our civil engineer look at this and we, we sort of ran a couple of options by him that we thought sort of could be met like the, the flow wells, the. The rain gardens and. He does not recommend any of those kind of devices. So, um, we would not recommend. The usage of any of those devices from, from our standpoint.
Okay, thanks.
So Paul, question clarification. Is it just for this particular site? Because we have had. Mitigation in the form of a rain garden on other stream buffer. Variants request.
Yes, for, for this site specifically, and we sort of asked, and we made it sort of part of the condition too. Where we asked about the, uh, the drainage qualities of the soil and. Um, we left it up to the applicant to do a soil test now or at a later time. But, um, the, the soil test, uh, that the soil conditions there are. Um, are part and then sort of that independent sort of off the device itself. That we felt we wouldn't be able to recommend, uh, to recommend approval. So we didn't want them to spend time and money sort of on, yeah.
And just as a quick note, the rain garden from, um, last summer was not a stream buffer variance. It was a lot coverage issue. Just as a quick note.
Okay, I, I want to. Take a little bit of a different perspective here. Um. I recognize that one of the significant issues. In your yard is the runoff. And the fact that. It renders your yard unusable. Following rain. So. Whether this is a, a stream buffer issue or. Colonial pipeline easement or whatever it, our coverage, I recognize the runoff and the. Situation that leaves you with. And so I, I want to. Thank you for trying to improve your property. I want to thank you for trying to reduce the. Um, the runoff. And the, between the dry creek bed, the, um, retaining walls. I mean, I, I, and the rain garden, I can see how even the rain garden would help the flow coming out of the dry creek bed. So. I just want to go on record acknowledging that you're taking steps, not just that, because you want a pool, but because you're. Trying to improve. The runoff situation and. Thank you for that.
Yeah, well. I mean. What I want you guys to understand is that I. I think some of my colleagues share the same thing. I don't mind if you want to pull. I mean, I want to give you, the only thing is I gotta fit it into some box. And if I can't fit into one of those boxes, I can't, I, and that's why I asked the question because. Uh, I'm looking, okay, all right, I want to do this, he needs this, 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 but it's just not fitting. In them. And that's why, that's what the question, I mean, I read the minutes. Read the packet, looked at the whole thing. I saw it. And by the time you get here, if you still have questions, then it's a comfort on you guys to kind of tell me. Have my questions answered, you know? And, and that, that's where the questions were. And the, the hardship is definitely a question, um, that, you know, usually people. Overcome by. Feeling getting somehow, you know, if you could fit in that, okay, you know what? But I'm not gonna tell you what to say, but, but, um, but that, that's what it is. So don't think that it's because we don't want a pool. We don't want, we all live here. I'm telling you, I want my kids to go to your pool. If they can, you know, I'm just kidding. But I'm saying. That, that's, that's the conundrum that. I'm into, you know, all right. Right.
Correct. And, and yeah, and my, my comments earlier were not intended to be derogatory or anything. It's just in the spirit of like the applicant too. It's like, call a spade a spade. I mean, we're trying to. Fit a square peg in a round hole here. Now, if you guys feel differently, we obviously respect that, but we also. We have to do what we. You know, with our code of guidelines too. So. Um, I, I don't, and I hear you too. I don't think you should, it should go down a path of, hey, I need to reduce my pool to make it work. I don't think that's fair to you guys either, right? Um, so, so I understand that we said, stated earlier about not getting into that kind of mess, but. The, the proposed range, I guess the, the biggest thing, question mark to me was, you know, maybe I was just, you know, the, I think the dry rock bed, was that from before too, or is that new? The dry creek bed? Yeah, the rain garden is the only thing new. I just. I thought there would be, maybe it was just, if the city has any much further comment about, is there anything else that they could potentially do? Or was that, you know, sounds like options were discussed. Is there? Anything besides the reduction? Cause let's just say that's off the table, right? The reduction in the pool. Is there, is there anything? In favor, that could favor the applicant to, to make this work?
So we, we don't think so. Like, no, 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 not from our side.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think there's, um, there's one element that has been overlooked. And when we're talking about the size of the swimming pool. If you would please look at the diagram that we have offered, there is a dotted line representing the current existing patio.
Is that the proposed project?
Um, it says, if you look on the right side of the plan where it says demo existing wall and pavers. Okay. Yes, there's a, there's a light dotted line that goes through the, the bottom, I guess, not quite third of the swimming pool. That, that's current pervious. So when we're talking about, you know, the, the net change between taking apart. Uh, current. You know, pervious material that's contributing to the stream. And replacing some of that with this body of water that also again is reducing the, the speed that water is leaving the property. So I understand that we're trying to check the boxes and hardship is definitely one that we want to talk about. Um, the other one, of course, we want to talk about is our desire. Uh, and the homeowner's desire to improve the lot and the way that it, it sends water away from the lot. So that's the one what I've been focusing on. But the other one, when we talk about hardship and I look at the family, their desire to have a swimming pool, their desire to improve. Their property as is. Um, the, the hardship is ability to reasonably and conservatively improve their property when others can't. Um, they have a backyard that they're trying to make more usable. And the hardship is strictly, they, they can't do that. They can't improve their own property that they purchased in Dunwoody in a reasonable and conservative fashion. Is seven hundred square foot pool reasonable? I think that is. I don't think that's an appropriate question. I, I honestly think, you know, when we're talking about, is it reasonable for this property, for this family? For this size home and this size yard? Absolutely.
Go ahead. Staff, just curious. I know we covered this in the first case, I think, or in the first, um. Issuance of this variance. Um. The net increase in, in previous surface.
So the maximum impervious surface on the property that's allowed or the maximum lot coverage percentage is forty percent. Uh, the increase in impervious would. Push it up to forty percent. So they'd be at the maximum.
But previously, currently, I should say, he's saying that there's also pavers and so forth that makes it close to that or reasonably close to that. I don't.
Yeah, I'm not, I can't remember what exactly the current impervious surface is. Um, but there, yeah, there is.
That increase in impervious is kind of what I'm looking for, I guess, but.
Yeah.
Looks like it's substantially more.
Yeah, there is an increase in impervious. Given that this is what is existing currently.
I, I want to ask another question about the flow. Are the flow wells, flow valves that the city engineer said would not. Work. And I'm, I'm trying to understand the disruption of the land. Of, of the property. When a pool is being installed. Um. How, how disruptive is that, the initial construction of it? And then. Again, why were these flow, flow valves? Why didn't they pass muster? What?
The, so, um, the, I'll, I'll speak like first about the construction. Um, how this would work is that, um. You know, the, the applicant would have to meet the, uh, the general kind of soil erosion standards that go with it. So they would put up two rows of, of silt pens, or they would put silt fencing. Um, that would limit sort of the runoff of the construction side. The, um, then the work would take place in there. This is sort of if, if these things are maintained to perfection, the, the runoff is limited. Um, the realities that, that, that we see. On, on properties and on projects in the city, it varies, right? Like that, the way kind of like the contractors over the. The months that it takes, these things need to be maintained, that need to be marked out. Um, over, over time and that, that depends, you know, it depends. We have. All the time we have. In this room, we have court cases of people who do not maintain these structures. Um. The, um. The, the long-term impacts, um, are sort of that, there is just like more sort of impervious area on site. And so that water doesn't get, doesn't get filtered like through vegetation and. The, um, flow wells are technically tools that are designed to. Uh, improve the water quality by sort of water goes in and then sort of it slowly percolates in the system and then goes out and then. Sort of silt or like, uh, debris sort of gets filtered out. They're generally the blue, in the, the blue book does not recommend those close to streams because it relies on. The soil being able to sort of infiltrate that water after it gets out of the device. Um. They're generally like the, we use the blue book. It's a, a Georgia-based kind of document on. That, that provides sort of standards for these and that generally does not recommend these. Um. We are also requesting sort of soil sampling and. Georgia soils are kind of a little bit tricky anyways. Um. And then the closer you get to a body of water, the more, you know, the more it is sort of, you have ground water relatively close and the, the worst the conditions are. Um, for sort of infiltration, like here you would have to dig into the ground several feet. So it, it doesn't get better the deeper you dig. To, so they tend to not. Maintain or that those soils tend to not have the characteristics. That allow for the useful application of these tools. We don't technically know because we haven't done any sampling and the applicant hasn't done any sampling, but. Um, generally that, that is like not recommended in, in those applications.
Okay, thanks.
And in response to the impervious surface, it's approximately seven hundred and forty square feet of additional impervious.
I, I'm still having like a disconnect, I think, from the last meeting we had, because we asked these people. To go back and look, see if we can have these flow wells or the flow valves. But now we're saying that, that's not a good idea. Do we have a study? Has this, do we have something we could review and look at as to what, like? That was done specifically on their property?
So what, what happened at the last meeting, if I remember correctly, was that the applicant proposed to do flow wells. And then we sort of asked for not to approve them without sort of, without any of those studies. Um. But to sort of give us time to review. Um, we have reviewed what, what they have submitted and we've made sort of, um. We've, we've, you know, we've reviewed it against the blue book and we've recommended it, or we've reviewed it against sort of the, the general recommendations. Um, we've asked sort of for the studies, so for the soil test in that instance, um. The applicant has not, has not done them, which they don't have to do. Um, so we put in sort of a condition for the. The rain garden that the soil needs to meet these, uh, clarificate or needs to meet these specifications. Um. So we haven't done anything specifically. We don't haven't done anything specifically for this site, but we've given it to. Our civil engineer and, and gotten his take on, on the proposal.
Any other questions?
Um, just, I, I feel like. I'm, I'm no expert in any of this with the flow wells and the rain gardens. We, we're trying to do the best with the information we have. And trying to do the best for our yard. Um, I feel like we keep going back to what our impervious is at. And it seems, you know, the size keeps coming up, but it's not been asked of us to reduce. We, we would reduce the pool size. We would. Uh, if you're looking at the site plan, we could take off those pavers on the left side. If you're looking at the site plan, the new pavers on the left. We could take those out. We could add a. You know, rain garden to the other side where the pool is. We are happy to do these things. We're trying to make, you know, best use. For us to be able to have a pool and also keep the stream and. Meet. The requirements that it needs to. We're happy to do any of that, if that helps at all.
I, I'll, I'll tell you one guidance for me. Okay. Yeah, I'm the one that was in there the last time. But for me, right? If you could have something. That better shows me that the. It's gonna be better. With what other pool? I, I've heard the arguments. Um, um, like. I don't know, is the, right now, the, the water soaks. I don't know, some amount deep and it becomes come like a mud. Um, is it gonna be in, and it's probably dangerous for the person next door. It overflows, but with that. If I put this, it's, it's gonna be much better. This is what happens. So if I could be convinced of that, then. Then I could think about it. Cause right now, what it looks like is, and like, like I said, I don't even mind if you had. A pool, two pools, as long as I can fit it in, but it, I'm not kind of convinced that it's. Necessarily you're making the situation better. Without the pool than. Then if you didn't have the pool, you understand?
Better, better as far as drainage?
Right, drainage and all the other, because I mean.
I just like, if you were to see our backyard today, I, like today, meaning with all the rain right now. It's, I, I consider a mud pit. I, I, we have dogs and they run around and.
So is my yard.
Okay, okay, fine. But we're trying to improve. Our goal is to improve that and. The pool itself will stop a lot of the. It, it's a water collection. I mean, if I dug a hole right now, I could make a pool in my backyard, right? So this is. The pool itself will help retain the water. And then on the other side, we've got the. New, instead of, right now we have steps going down where those two retaining walls, there's steps. And what happens? You know, is the rain comes down the driveway and it like, it's like a waterfall down these steps, right? Into our backyard.
Yeah. And the other stuff, what happens in the winter when the, when the pool's covered? Is it still collected? I don't have to answer this question.
It's open.
It's gonna be open all year.
Yes, sir.
I think what Artie's trying to say too is, and, and you guys were mentioning it earlier, you want to improve your property. That's understandable. There's a difference between addressing the issues with your property and drainage and therefore, and also wanting to kill two birds with one stone and have a pool. And you know, kind of like icing on the cake. I, I would love to give it to you. Um, I, I just. Like you said, like already saying, it's like, how do you, how do you fit that in the puzzle? It's, it's completely in the stream buffer. It's just. You know, when you inherit a home, when you buy a home, it's kind of like, sometimes there's just things you can't change about it. And one of those major things is the lot, right? Um. Hey. And I mean, short of you demoing your home and like trying to figure out how to get out of that stream buffer. And building a whole new house. I. It's just hard to see how it would work. This is, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say. Um. And, and, and I'm not gonna take a stance on getting into the nitty gritty like you guys mentioned either, because I don't have expertise in. Pool engineering and runoff and all that stuff. So, you know. To Artie's point earlier, it's just, we, that's what he means, I think, is when he says like, to make the case and understand the hardship. The hardship, understanding about not being able to use your backyard. Yeah, I, I get that too. But that would address the drainage pieces. That doesn't necessarily address the pool.
So like, for example, our neighbor, her ba, her basement floods sometimes right now. So if we were able to show that this could help eliminate her basement from flooding when it rains heavy, that would be something that would make sense to you, Artie.
Right, but that you could do that with the drain, addressing drainage issue without adding pools.
But if we could do it and add a pool, we both win.
In a perfect world, absolutely.
Right?
In a perfect world.
I mean, what, you know, if we're gonna help our neighbor, then why can't we win a little bit too? Why can't we all win, right? I think, you know, right now, we, the grass doesn't grow. We, we put sod down before it dies. You know, um, you know, we, it's, it's, it's not, I mean, so I don't know. You know, right now, I don't know if we did a soil test, if it would pass whatever the soil test should be, because there's not grass stopping it anyway. Um, you know, so I, I, you know, I don't know. But, but like Kate said, is that we are willing to. Work with the city and we've been trying to work with the city and. We left last meeting thinking. We left last meeting thinking, great, we'll do these flow wells, it's gonna be great. And that, and then we came back and, and, and we feel like.
And, and I understand that, but I think that might have been a bit presumptuous is all I'm saying. I think there's a lot that goes into this.
There was a motion to approve it, so I get that. I get that, um, I mean, what, is there anything else that you guys, um? I'm just thinking from a.
I mean, and the big problem is you're in the stream buffer. That, that, if there was no stream buffer, then, you know.
Sure, then how are other pools approved in the stream buffer? Out of curiosity.
We don't approve too many of them, so don't ask that question.
I mean, that means there have been some, right? I mean. I mean, you know, go ahead. Sorry, I just wanted to add, uh, it, it just occurred to me with what you were saying, you, you mentioning. You know, what, what is? What we're doing due to. Or what potentially hardship does the property have right now? Well, the runoff with the way the water is now. It, it does add silt to the stream. They mentioned they can't, they can't grow grass. You know, they've tried twice, so the grass that you saw in the photos are grass that's dying and it's gonna keep doing it over and over again. So left alone, which they have every right to do nothing, right? Um, we're gonna start adding more and more silt to the stream. Because it's just gonna keep on raining and that, nothing's gonna keep what's on their property there. The improvements that they're offering. Um, limited amount of, of improvements. Could be built that would actually improve the situation. A swimming pool is actually one of those. I know that coming from the pool builder, that sounds, you know. Suspect, but the truth is, if you think about, could I build a patio? Could I build? You know, I, I can't, I can't put it grass down. Nothing's gonna stay and I can't put hardscape down because it's in additional impervious. A swimming pool would actually retain water. So that is a solution that might. Assist the current hardship situation.
I want to address the board and say that I very much favor what they're trying to do to reduce. The runoff, to take out the stairs, replace it with the dry creek bed. I mean, I think that is a significant property improvement and we definitely want to help them improve their property. I'm not saying that the pool. Is the best thing, but I. I'm, I do feel strongly about them taking initiative to improve the property, so. It, it is really tough to figure out how to. Help them improve their property when we are bound by these guidelines to use. To approve a variance, because that's what we're here to do is. Use guidelines to approve variances where it makes sense, um. I, I, I just, I don't know. I mean, I. Short of, because putting in a patio, that's not going to improve the property, that's going to add impervious surface. A pool is adding impervious surface. There's sort of a. Double edged. Two ways of looking at it because. It does collect a little water. It, it, obviously there are reasons that we don't improve, approve pools in stream buffers, but. I just wish there were, it didn't have to be an all or nothing kind of deal here. I get the sense from the homeowners, it's. I, I, I think I heard you say, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if the pool is not approved, that you're not going to do the. Um, the side improvements to remove, get rid of the stairs, put the. Dry creek bed in. And the rain garden. Excuse me. I just wish there was some other way to improve the property that we would be able to. Approve within our variance guidelines of building anything in a stream buffer. That also had the, met the intent of improving the property.
So the, the way that I would, my, my response to that would be. We do have a way that we can help them in some respects. And, and that is really going with the staff recommended option. We could flat out deny all of their requests, by the way. So I'm ready to make a motion. I feel like we've talked this. Ad nauseam, if anyone wants to move forward.
Um, I have one, um, the, the homeowner offered to take away. Their patio, the pavers. Since the city keeps talking about we're gonna be max, um, impervious surface. Does that change your? Feelings in one way or the other? If we tied that as a, um, if we were to approve it and we tied it as part of the approval.
So it's a hypothetical, um, the. It would, it would sort of, if, if I'm standing right here and I had to make a call, it would not, it would not change our recommendation.
Thank you. So that says to me, board, is that I know the city said, you know, it's forty percent total block coverage, but that's just, that's just factual. It's not really what they base their decision on, because the homeowner just asked to put it under.
And they were still.
You're right.
Well, it doesn't matter. I'm saying the city was pushing that that's putting you there and then this homeowner said, well, you know, we'll go back, we'll go back. But it didn't change.
Right, didn't change.
Okay, that's what I have to say about that.
All right. Anyone else?
Make them, yep. All right, I move to deny the request for variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight to allow pool, pool decking and paper patio to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer. And I move to approve the request for variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight to allow retaining wall. The removal of steps and associated improvements. And a dry creek improvement to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer. And a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section two sixty-nine. To allow retaining wall to encroach into the side setback. And retaining wall height up to eight feet, subject to the following conditions presented by staff. Construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Hearthstone Luxury Pools and Outdoors, see appendix A. With the exception that the swimming pool, pool deck, paver patio and rain garden shall not be constructed. And two, if construction is not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Motion on the table, do we have a second?
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor of denying the application? One for, I'm sorry, of approving option two, staff recommendation of, of approving the, uh, section, um. Twenty-seven, right, and denying sixteen. Right. A vote? Yes. All those in favor of supporting Ryan's motion of, uh, accepting the staff recommendation of denying. Uh, the request for variance from chapter sixteen. Um, and approving the variance for chapter twenty-seven.
You want us to say aye or you?
All those in favor? All those opposed? Was that three or three?
No, but she did vote.
Yeah, you both.
Okay.
Yeah.
It passed.
It passed.
Yeah, Ryan's motion passes.
What was the vote?
Four to three.
And who voted in favor?
All those pavers. Ryan.
And just to clarify, this was like the staff recommended.
Correct. There was two, right? There was two variances within that op-, uh, recommendation option.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, board. We're on to the next case, it's new business. ZBA twenty-two dash twenty-one. Wesley Luftig, on behalf of the homeowners at fourteen ninety-two Carnaby Court. Requested variance from chapter twenty-seven, section one forty-seven to allow a new home to encroach into the contextual street setbacks. Like, would you walk us through this one, please?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Um, so as just said, they're seeking a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section one forty-seven to allow a new home to encroach into the contextual street setbacks. Um, there were six letters of support and they were included in the packet that you all received. These are the existing conditions as shown in the aerial image to the right and the photo to the left. So there is an existing two thousand three hundred and twenty-four square foot. Two-story, single-family home constructed in nineteen seventy. There is an approximate fourteen-foot drop from the western property line to the eastern property line. You can see that in the photo to the left, that it starts to slope downwards. There is a, there's also a twenty-foot drainage easement on the eastern edge of the property. And that can be seen in the survey to the right here. So the applicant proposes to demolish the existing house and construct a new house on the subject lot as seen in the photo to the left. The residential infill regulations mandate that the street-facing facade of a new house on a corner lot. Must be located within the range of street setbacks observed by detached houses that exist on the nearest two lots. With frontage on the same street as the subject lot. So in this case, that makes the street setback range between fifty-nine point four feet and sixty-three point three feet. The new proposed house would observe a street setback of thirty-five feet as seen in the survey to the right. Necessitating a variance request since it will encroach into the contextual street setbacks. So here are the neighboring two lots that determine the street setback range. So the minimum front setback for the R one hundred zoning districts is thirty-five feet. However, since the proposed home is new residential infill, section twenty-seven dash one forty-seven dictates that its street-facing facade must be located within the range of street setbacks observed by the houses. On the nearest two lots with frontage on Carnaby Court. So this street setback range is again between fifty-nine point four feet and sixty-three point three feet, and you can see that here. Um, that those are the street setbacks for these two houses. The subject lot meets the minimum standards for lot width and area as required for the R one hundred zoning district. However, the subject property's lot depth is relatively shallow at a hundred and thirty-five feet, especially in comparison with the. Lot depths for the two adjacent lots, which are approximately a hundred and seventy feet each. Without the variance request, the contextual fifty-nine point four foot front setback. And the forty-foot rear setback would leave a buildable area depth of only thirty-five point six feet. And this isn't really sufficiently deep to construct a typical new detached house. Additionally, as a corner lot, the property has two street setbacks, a rear setback. And a side setback which further constrains the buildable area. The approximate fourteen-feet slope drop from the western edge to the eastern edge of the property and the twenty-foot. Drainage easement on the eastern edge of the property further limit the buildable area. The applicant is proposing to adhere to the typical thirty-five-foot front setback in, in the R one hundred zoning district. If the contextual street setbacks did not apply to the lot, the proposed house would not encroach, it would not require a variance. The subject lot faces unique challenges not applicable to the two adjacent lots, since they each have an additional forty feet in lot depth, lot depth. And therefore more buildable area. Staff finds that the project does not go beyond the minimum. Necessary to afford relief as the proposed house is comparable in size to other homes in the neighborhood. The applicant is proposing a two thousand two hundred and ninety-seven square foot house, which is similar to the house they're currently living in. And the two adjacent houses are approximately twenty-three hundred and twenty-four hundred square feet respectively. Adhering to the contextual street setbacks would, which would result in an approximate sixty-foot front setback. Would unduly constrain the already limited buildable area for this lot and would present a hardship for the use of this lot as a building lot. The rear of the existing house is already encroaching into the rear setback by approximately fourteen feet. And the front of the existing house is already not within the front. Uh, contextual street setbacks at about fifty-seven feet. So staff finds that this requested variance would be consistent with the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance and would not constitute a granting of special privilege. Based on these reasons, um, we are recommending approval, subject to the conditions shown on the screen here, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any representatives of the applicants in attendance who want to speak and address the board? Just state your name and, um, address, please.
Wesley Luftig, I'm the applicant and builder. This is Leonati Pendleton, they're the homeowners. And Brian here represents the architect. So I don't want to. Rehash what she just said, but it is a unique lot with a lot of conditions that are. Uh, abnormal. And a lot of constraints on what we want to do. Um, I think one of the highlights I want to touch on is that they've done a great job reaching out to all the neighbors. And I think we had, would you say, six letters of. Uh, people approving it or not approving it, but, uh, recommending approval. And nobody, uh, not wanting it. Um, but we're here to answer any questions that you might have that can help us.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions initially? Okay. Uh, anyone else want to speak, uh, in favor? I know there's been letters that were submitted, some emails, as you mentioned. No one in person, okay?
You know what, I'm sorry, I do have one question. Do you all live there now? So you would, and you tear down, you have to move away and then. Okay, there's. Didn't know if you just bought it or if you. Oh, okay.
Great. Okay, anybody in opposition? No opposition, all right, well, for now, we'll close it to public comment and, uh. Board questions and comments.
I looked at the deepness. It's great, looks great. We're not building a McMansion or anything, not that that has any bearing, you know.
But no, I mean.
It's a good looking layout and it's, they're making it work within the confines of what. They got, so.
Yeah, we do see to your point, we've seen, you know, our fifties and people trying to put things that, you know. Caveat emptor, and these people have had this property and they're just trying to basically.
I'm glad staff pointed out that it's already out of. Code, I mean, it's already, it, it's currently built in.
And, and if you're reaching out to your neighbors proactively as an applicant, it always says something about what you're trying to do too, so.
The other thing I looked at is the setback really is because of the garage is forward. The front door really, the front of the house, if you say you took the garage, take the garage, I'm not asking you to do it, I'm just asking for visual. Where the house, where I walk in my front door, it's pretty close.
Yeah, we, we throw that back up there, that render.
I think it's pretty, I, I, I can't, I tried to do math at home with this thing. I couldn't figure out that the distance between the edge of the garage, the. And the front door, basically.
Correct, the majority of the house that will be in the conceptual setback is the garage.
Right, so you know, it's gonna look, if you drove by, it's gonna.
It's the side of the garage.
Physically, physically in the neighborhood, it's gonna, it's not gonna look like the whole thing, it's the whole house. All right, thank you.
And thirty-five feet is standard, right? This is, we're talking about the contextual setback here, so. No, absolutely.
Contextuals are interesting.
It's important, honestly, um, but.
Yeah, but I was glad to sort of feel how it's gonna look. That's what it's for.
All right.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Artie?
Um, I move to approve the request for variance from section twenty-seven dash one forty-seven to allow a new home to encroach. Into the contextual street setbacks, subject to the following conditions presented by staff. One, construction of the new house must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Surveyland Express Inc. And dated twelve, one, twenty twenty-two. You could see appendix A. And secondly, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
All right. First and a second, all those in favor of approving? No opposed, passes. Thank you. You bet, yes. No other business that we know of? Other comment? Board comment? No comment? Meeting?
Wait, board, board comment?
Board comment.
Thank you, staff, for all of the. Effort that you have put into these proposals and the review and the explanations, thank you.
And for Art now about.
Yeah.
I, I appreciated that.
Yes.
I needed that, I needed that little. Yeah.
Great stuff. All right, with that, we are adjourned, folks.